The night of the budget meeting for 2025, correct? And also discussion on 2024, some amendments we're going to make. I would like to first excuse, let's do a roll call if we could, and we'd like to excuse Board Member Corey Holmes tonight. But who do we have with us tonight, roll call?
Marion Bialin, Board Member.
Tom Hanson, Board Member.
Lieutenant Tyler Bluth, Board Member.
Kim Dickerson, Board Member.
Jason Watt, Business Administrator.
Thank you. If we could get a pledge of allegiance led by Tom Hanson, that would be wonderful.
All rise. Please repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Well, it's been an interesting time for us, this last couple of weeks, as far as wrapping up the year, graduation. Seems like we just had a board meeting, but here we are again to discuss budget for 2025. And it has been a good drill as far as our relationships with our teachers and talking about the next year coming up. It's been a good practice and we always enjoy it. So a good opportunity to talk to our people and our staff and love this time of year. But we'll get right into it. We are going to discuss here budget 24, 25. And Jace, we're going to turn the time over to you.
Great, thank you. So I sat in those chairs and listened to Keith Johansson do this for like so many years that I don't really think I paid as close attention as, well certainly I didn't pay as close of attention as I have this year, but I heard Keith talk about the difficulty in, in school district budgeting as we are building a budget based on projections of revenue, projections of expenditures. And we're going to be talking about two different budgets tonight. Our fiscal year 24 budget, which ends officially on June 30th, which we are still kind of projecting both revenues and expenditures for that budget, as well as the fiscal year 25 budget. So we'll go back and forth as we sort of describe what is happening with our budget so that the board can make informed decisions moving forward. And so we're going to, at the end of this meeting, we'll be recommending that the board both amend the FY24 budget and approve the FY25 budget. We'll go over that as we, as we continue. So hopefully you can, everyone can see that this is a sheet that lists by revenue and expenditures, our actual fiscal year 23 budget, that's the only, that's the last budget that would be finalized, our proposal to amend the FY24 budget, and then a proposal for an FY25 budget. You can see that in the general fund, our budget will increase this year by just slightly over $5 million, about five and a half million dollars. That represents a 5.03% increase to the budget. That corresponds almost exactly with the percentage of salary increase that the board has agreed upon and will approve tonight for the, for its employees. Our, our general fund will, revenue and expenditures will increase from 109,304,000 to just under 115 million, 114,813,000. What's, what's, the reason why it's only that much is because fortunately this year, our health pool has done very well and there is no increase, virtually no increase to the cost of our health insurance plan. There's a slight increase, very slight increase to the dental plan, but no increase to our health, the cost of healthcare was a significant win for us and our budget moving forward. Insurance is still one of the places where, that sets us apart from other school districts in the state in how we are offering full family insurance plans to all of our employees. In the general fund, of the, of the 35 or so million dollars that we spend on employee benefits, about 14 million of that is for health insurance. And so that's been a priority for the board that I think is paying dividend, dividends in the quality teachers we are, we are both attracting and, and retaining. The other, the other, I'll hit just kind of a couple of things briefly as we, as we go down. I'm gonna, I'm gonna stay in the general fund for a minute. You can see in the, in the second column there of expenditures, there's a box that separates how the general fund is used. And again, the general fund is, is, is what we use for all of our teacher, student, almost all of our personnel is in there with the exception of some, a few food service folks that are in, in, in the food service fund. But that's where we're, we're, the, the vast majority of our expenditures are. And as you can see, we've been really consistent at over 73% of our general funds are going to instructional purposes. And so that would include teachers and teacher salaries, which is of course the bulk of that. That would include aid support in, in classrooms. That would include student supplies and materials, all, all that would be instructional materials. And so that's also one of the, the, the areas where I think the board has prioritized and sets itself apart to have an extremely high percent of its budget going towards instructional costs. As, as we, as we, as we go down through the list a little bit, you'll see that the student activity fund is, is, we are proposing a couple of things. We're going to amend, we're going to propose that we amend the general fund expenditures and revenues by a million dollars in FY24, not because we overspent the budget. In fact, I believe that it's going to come in right at about, our FY, our, our, our budget that we submitted last June for FY24 in the general fund was 108,304,612. And we project that we're going to come just slightly over that, but in, in order to, to not go over budget, which triggers a whole state response, it's, it's prudent to amend the budget to ensure that you don't come in over budget on your, either your expenditures or your revenues, which are equal when you do school budgeting. The, the other, the other changes that we're proposing to make amendments to the FY24 budget is a $500,000 increase in the revenue and expenditures in the student activity fund. The student activity fund is made up about 90 to 95% of that is the money brought in and expended by the high school for its activity programs. And so, and so with the additional, with the additional students there, and, and not just activity, that would be all their, their supplies and all the things that they spend for any of the student classes and activities there. So with the increase of students there, we're, we're expecting a slight increase in that budget. The next fund, after activity fund is the tax increment fund, that's its official name. This is really, you'd know this as the charter school fund. This is the amount of local tax proceeds that is siphoned off and sent directly to the state. It doesn't even come to us, sent directly to the state from the county to help finance the charter schools in the state. We are going to, that, that came in just slightly higher than we were projecting as well, so we're going to ask the board to amend that budget by just over $42,000. The debt service fund is, is not, does not need to be amended. That is the amount, this, that's the amount that we expend every year on our general obligation debt. You can see from, from fiscal year 23, that's gone down significantly. The $13 million in fiscal year 23 went down to $4 million for FY24. And that's because we moved $9 million of that money into the capital fund that we're now using to, we just barely about, about a month ago, made our last payment on the current Wasatch High School. So the current Wasatch High School is now completely paid for. That's about four years early, earlier than, than was, was projected when we started. And so that money now will be used in fiscal year 25 as we make our first principal and interest payment on the new construction of the new high school. And so the only thing that's left now in the debt service fund is the payment for the Tepenogus Middle School, Wasatch Aquatic Center, and Daniels Canyon, that, those general obligation bonds. That's, that's all the, that's all we have left in the, in, in the debt service fund. So that's a significant improvement and progress that we're making on, on paying and meeting our, our debt obligations. You can see that in the capital fund, revenues will stay relatively constant, slight increase there. Again, we don't have any, we haven't received, we expect it soon, but we have no information as of yet from the county on the valuation of the county. And so projecting tax revenues from, is, is really a bit of a guess right now. Obviously we are guaranteed what we received last year, we're projecting a slight increase due to some, some growth. But our expenditures in the capital, this is the one fund where you'll note that the expenditures are different from the revenues. 112 million dollars for last year, and we're projecting 98 million dollars for this next year. Those are expenditures we expect to incur relative to building the new high school. Okay? So that is all part of, of, of the capital fund. You'll notice that in fiscal year 23, it was broken out to, from the capital fund to the local building authorities. That's why we had so much revenue in fiscal year 23. That's already been accounted for, so we don't account for that again in subsequent years. That's why the, the expenditures in the capital fund now are beyond those of our revenues because the 150 million dollars plus in lease revenue bonds are currently being managed in an account for us that we get reimbursed for as we make expenses on the new high school. The food services fund is the, is the next fund. This is, as it sounds, all of our expenditures and re, and revenues related to running our, the food service operations in the district. That is going to stay flat, we're projecting for, from year to year. And the last one is the foundation fund, which is only the activities relative to the school district foundation. We are going to ask to, you to approve an amendment of 300,000 for the foundation as they, as they raise more money and therefore will be making additional expenditures of that money to students in, in the foundation. If you look down at our, at the bottom set of these, this figures, we have our general fund expenditures. You can see that in fiscal year 25, 89.6% of our expenses in the general fund will be our salaries and benefits. And so this is, this is maybe as indicative of anything else about the, the board, this board's commitment to ensuring that our teachers and other employees are well compensated and, and, and compensated such that, that they are staying and that we're able to retain teachers when, new teachers when others retire or move on. And so that's, it's, this is, it's just a heavy salary oriented budget, which is why you can almost directly track from year to year, our expenditure increases in the general fund to be the benefit package that you've given the teachers from year to year. Are there any questions on that? The, that's the bulk of the budget. We'll be going over a couple of additional things as we move forward. Any questions on that before I move forward from the board?
Oh, that's great.
All right, this next slide then will be a, is, is a, a table of our revenues, where our revenues are coming from. Again, the fiscal year 23 actuals and then, and then what we're projecting for 24 and 25. Local tax proceeds, of course, are becoming an increasingly greater percentage of the revenue that we are bringing in. As the valuations in our county increase, the amount of state money that we receive decreases because of the state's equalization program to ensure that all students in Utah are, are able to be funded at least at a minimum level. And so for this next year, of the 163 million dollars in total revenue, we project 101 million, $1 million of that will come from local tax proceeds. The other chunk of it is the state money, which is 42 million dollars or 25%. The, the local other would be things, well, anything that comes locally that's not, that's not from the tax. So some of the, some of the activity sorts of things where we're talking about, that comes in there, the revenue received from preschool, the revenue received from food service, all of those are in the local other. And then our federal revenues are decreasing a little bit. We're down now officially all done with the ESER monies. This will, this will be our last, this officially of 24 is our last year where we have any federal monies related to COVID. And so those, as those move off the books, those, those fiscal, those federal revenues have come down slightly. The next chart is just another version really of the same thing, and I won't spend much time on this. This is just to show, if you were kind of looking at this in, in table form, you'd notice a ginormous revenue bar on fiscal year 23. Again, that's the least, that's one of the least revenue bonds were received and, and accounted for. This chart is our total expenditures by year. Again, the, the, the main reason why these are so significantly different is again, the, the, the new high school. And so that top blue bar is the capital fund and the projected expense of 112 million dollars in the capital fund was almost entirely, not entirely, but almost all of that is due to expenses for the new high school, in addition to the 98 million for, for fiscal year 25. All, all the other things are as you, are, are the same or are just incrementally increased like the general fund is as you've given raises to teachers and other employees. So this is a chart of our expenditures in the general fund and break, broken up by instructional and support services. Again, just the graphic representation of what we talked about earlier, where we are just over 73% instructional. There's a, there's, there's another graph of about the same thing. We got into some graphs here. This is a general fund expenditure by, by salary, benefits, supplies, equipment. This is what we're spending, this is the entirety now of the general fund expenditures. So the blue bar is salaries, the orange bar is benefits, which includes FICA, medic, Medicaid, and also social security, or also the retirement and the cost of insurance. So you can see how the percentage has kind of increased over time. And like I said, we're, we're, we're just under 90% now of that expenditure spent on teachers' salaries and benefits. And you can see the other much smaller portions that we suspend, that we spend on purchase services, which would include professional development and supplies, textbooks and equipment. That's another graph of that. So this is the last, the last chart I wanted to talk to you about. This is from the last fiscal year. This is a comparison now of fund balances in the general fund. Sometimes boards have, it's difficult to know kind of how, where should we, where should we grow our fund balance? This compares all districts. And so again, this is at the end of fiscal year 25 because we haven't certified fiscal year 24 yet, so there'll be a new one of these when, once that happens. But at the end of fiscal year 23, Wasatch School District had a fund balance in the general fund of 25,420,000, 420,714. And then what, what, what we've done to kind of, so you have some, some way to compare that is to what percentage of your revenues in the general fund is that? Our revenues for that year were 99, almost 100 million. And so that represents 25% of your revenues in the general fund. And then on the last column there is where our district and each other district would rank based on the percentage of their total revenues, the fund, their fund balance represents. So of the 41 school districts represented here, we would be 27th of where that fund balance would represent, would fall. So just kind of a, a, a way for you to kind of gauge where you are as far as fund balance as, as, as compared to other districts in the state. And that's all I have, President. I think we can open it up to any comment or questions from the, from the group.
I think it's a good opportunity to, if we have anyone, like to, some comments about this and also end of the year, see some teachers here, love to hear some comment.
Jason, I, I have a quick question. If you, I wish there was a, a number here, but if you go to the capital fund, so in the section, is it the program reports? But right before the summary report tab, it's like three or four pages in. Right before the food service fund, there's the capital fund. Are you, are you there?
Yep.
Between the debt service fund and the food service fund is the capital fund. Okay, so I always, this is great, the, the fund balance for the general fund. I also like to track the fund balance for the capital fund. And I think I see it, I just want to double check, I'm looking at it correctly.
That's gonna look a lot bigger than it is because it's got the balance of our, of our lease revenue bond in there.
Okay. So maybe that's a follow-up, you can let me know if it's not here in front of me.
Well, it's on the very, if you turn your page over from, so the last of that, that says ending fund balance on that bottom line.
So is the 26 million, is that a?
That's, that would be, that would be a projection for the, for the end of the next fiscal year.
Okay. And of that, and of that 26, that is after you've subtracted out any of the expenditures that have?
I, I probably.
Capital fund that's going to pay for the new high school.
I think before you drew any conclusions about that, I think let's get through the end of fiscal year 24 and then see where our, see where our revenues are also for the next year. And then I can give you a projection of when we'll be done with our expenditures. We, we are going to be paying the bulk of our expenditures on the new, well, in 24 and 24, obviously, in 25 for the next school year. So I'd have to look and see what we expect to be remaining in the, in the, the lease revenue bond, but I.
Because it does 23 actual, the majority of that 170 million is going towards the new high school.
Yes.
And then the amended 2024 goes to 90 million, and then it, it drops significantly. So by 2025 budgeted, we should have most of that high school paid for.
Most of it, yeah.
Through the lease revenue bond that's in the capital fund.
That's right, yeah. So that would be our kind of estimate of that again before, before we've closed out this year.
All right. That was my question, thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Any comment? Jenna May.
That's pretty good though, if you look at where we were. Jenna Horrocks. I'm a teacher, but I'm also tonight representing a large bulk of teachers in our district through the Wasatch Education Association. We had an amazing meeting with the board, with negotiations. We sent out a survey to teachers and we left an open response box, which isn't something we typically do. We got over 100 comments of support for the school board. And I wanted to share some of those with you tonight. Thanks to our amazing school board, we truly are the best district in the state and one of the best in the country. Thank you for your hard work in helping make this happen. I'm incredibly grateful and I'm extra appreciative that this will help with the burden in rising cost of living. The next were a series of excitement for the maternity leave that we are rolling out. Huge response in regards to that. One thing that really surprised me was it came from veteran teachers. So excited for these new teachers coming in, starting families. So here are a couple of comments in regards to that. I'm so impressed with the maternity leave included in this compensation package. I wish this could have existed when I had my four babies. It shows how much the school board understands and values the time a mother needs with her newborn before returning to work. Three weeks paid before having to use sick and personal is an incredibly generous and thoughtful consideration for young teachers starting a family and still needing to work. This will help minimize stress and financial burden for those teachers. This was one of many, and I just want to say thank you so much for all you do. Morale is higher than it's ever been in our district, and it's because teachers are being taken care of. And when teachers are being taken care of, it rolls into students and every, every working part in our district. So thank you, thank you for all that you do. Thank you.
I'm Ryan Bishop from Wasatch High School, and I appreciate Jenna's comments very much. And I honestly, she enough said, kind of a mic drop there, the, the morale in the school district is, is incredible because of what you have committed to do for our educators here in the valley. Just from a high school perspective, our hiring pools have opened up tremendously the last few years as, you know, we have been the highest paid district in the state and been so competitive. This year specifically, the board and superintendent and the district directors were gracious enough to give us some extra administrative help as we prepare to open up two high schools in the valley. And as I was fortunate enough to sit on the interview committee for those administrators, I was blown away at the, the, who we had apply from not only inside the district but outside of the district. And, and then as we hired administrators, we had kind of a trickle down with, you know, our instructional coaches and other teachers and things as, as we made those hires at the middle schools and the high school. And again, our hiring pools just seemed to get better and better and better. And this wasn't really early in the year, you know, where you're talking about April or May when we were making some of these hires. And, and that's because people want to live here, but more importantly, people want to work here for our school district. And as we go out, right now, I've, I've spoken to Board Member Bluth and, and a couple as we try to hire some coaches at a really late time in the summer. And we're able to put together some, some very competitive hiring pools for our coaching and teaching positions because again, people see how committed our, our board and district directors and superintendent and, and of course, Dr. Watt is to making sure that our, our educators are taken care of. And, and really even in the seven or eight years that I've been fortunate enough to be in this district, I've seen this change tremendously in, in our hiring pool. So thank you, and again, I really appreciate Jenna's comments because the morale is high and it's, and it's getting, it's getting better every minute because of your commitment. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, Denise Marshall, and I live in Heber, but I teach at Midway Elementary. And I've taught in the district since 2005, and just wanted to express my gratitude because there were several years where we didn't get raises. I never thought that I would be making the amount of money that I'm going to be able to look forward to. And I appreciate your awareness and. the amount of money that I'm going to be able to look forward to. Um, and I appreciate your awareness and understanding of our economy and the beautiful valley, valley we live in and the fact that everybody's coming here, which is of course increasing our economy. But, um, on behalf of many teachers, we are very grateful and appreciate you more than we can express.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Briann Dietrichson, Heber. And I would just like to say thank you as a parent. My kids have exceptional teachers and have had such a positive educational experience in this district. And I believe that's because we are taking care of teachers and we're attracting the best of the best. And it matters in the kind of education my students are getting. So, um, I appreciate that the priority of the board is to make sure benefits are fully funded and that our teachers are well paid because it is trickling down to, um, our students. Thank you.
I'd just like to say something too. Mike Johnston. I raised three kids here, K through twelve. They excelled. They just, they had the best experience that I could ever imagine for them. And this school district is one of the reasons I think we, your body and the Heber City Council struggle with growth. It's such a wonderful place to live and people want to be here. Um, the education is phenomenal. I applaud you for everything you're doing. And I, I think that we, as a, as a city council of, of Heber City, this, 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 you know, fifty percent of the county lives in our city. We are here for collaboration with you on school sites. We're here for to collaborate on affordable housing solutions. It's a huge concern of ours that our staff and your staff can, can afford to purchase a home, not just rent. That, that's a huge concern of ours. So we, we've, we've been really pushing this as we've annexed county zoning and trying to change it into city that we require deed restricted per, in perpetuity, affordable housing, affordable at eighty percent area median income and sixty percent anti-area meeting income. And we have required that at least half of that is for purchase. And those are big costs that we're forcing development to fund. Um, we're here to help with safe school routes, with sidewalks that might be needed, uh, connecting trails, anything that you see as a need, please reach out to us as a city. And we will try and, and are trying to do the same to make recommendations. I know we're working on trying to get some free land as we move northward. And it may not be needed for twenty or thirty years, but if we can acquire it through annexation, that's what we want to do. I applaud this, this budget. It's probably the biggest budget you've ever had. We're going through the same process and we have the biggest budget we've ever had. A lot of capital costs in the city too, so. Oh, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
But we support you and we support this. And I know, I, I see that it's fiscally sound. I, I appreciate having twenty-five percent of our general fund in a, I guess I'd call it a rainy day fund. Seems like a lot. It's only three months, right? And, uh, but that does give us some sense, sense of protection. I feel sorry for some of these, the others, other numbers up here. Maybe we can do better, but, um, thank you very much for all the work you're doing as a, as a district, as a staff, as teachers. It's noticed.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. I'd just like to say at the end here of, of public comment, I, I just, I do think we owe, at least for me personally, we owe a, uh, some gratitude to board member Tom Hanson. Tom, we'll be leaving at the end of this, uh, this, this session for him. Um, and, but, but appreciate him. And then the, the first thing I learned from Tom when I came on the board was just the, the teachers are the center of this whole thing. This, this is the, the game plan. And we, we take care of them and, and everything falls in line. And, and that's, that's been our goal as a board and as, uh, other members have come on. Um, and having influence from former teachers and things, it's really, in my mind, that's this, this focus and this goal is, is the key. And I appreciate that. So, Tom.
We've come a long way.
Appreciate it. All you've done. So with that, we'll, uh, adjourn with, um, uh, public comment and we'll move into, uh, some motions for this budget.
Can I just real quick?
Sure.
I just want to say thank you to, to our business administrator, Jason Watt, for all that his, this is his first full year and he has done a fabulous job and more than capable of filling this position. And I've enjoyed sitting next to you and working with you this year. And I'm, I'm sure everyone feels the same here. So thank you for all that you do.
I appreciate that. I, my respect for Keith grows every day. So, uh, this took, it takes, it took a long time for me to wade through this and that's with calling him and have him come in and help me several times along the way. So he's been nothing but a, a resource for, for me as, as I move into this. And it's been, this, this has been a good experience for me for sure.
But Jason's also been more than a BA. He's, he, he does a lot here for everybody. So, thank you.
He never teases Stacy at all.
Okay, we're done.
Appreciate it.
Okay, this is actually, um, I, I believe there's an action item for this. Is that right, Stacy? Later on in the budget? So you, you can just start the, the meeting and we can go, when the action items comes up.
Got it. Okay, we'll pass it then. Okay. So do, do we want to adjourn our budget meeting and go into or just go right into? Okay. So we'll do that. We're going to adjourn the.
Just close the budget hearing.
Close the budget hearing and we'll move into our, our traditional.
I think you take a motion and, and a second on closing the.
Okay.
Okay, motion to adjourn the budget hearing.
Second? Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. So now let's move into our regular scheduled board meeting, correct? Um, I guess, do we need to do an official roll call? We're all here. We're ready to go. Okay. And we're going to, we'll start here with a guest presenter from the high school, a man that we all love and admire, uh, Justin Kelly. Just publicly, great job on graduation. You, you, you did, uh, as per usual. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you. I had a lot of help. Everybody needs help, right? So, um, I'm representing a vast group of people, um, and we've had a committee and I appreciate the name that we now, I believe it's officially called Deer Creek High School or Deer Creek. Welcome to the Creek. I'm speaking on behalf of the committee to, to kind of solidify, um, our mascot. And it's been a process to come up with a mascot these days that will include everyone. And so as we've been talking, I've been talking with kids, I've been talking with, as a committee, we, we've talked with students, we've talked with outside entities and, um, these are some quick drawings that we had, uh, BSN, um, kind of render and, and come up with. But, uh, Deer Creek is, is a power source and it's a power source for a lot of people. The valley uses power coming from Deer Creek Dam and, um, the water, one point five million people use the water from Deer Creek um, in the lower valley. So without Deer Creek, um, half the state would be, um, I guess you could say dehydrated because they don't have water. So, um, that's why they never, um, drained Deer Creek Reservoir when they're redoing some structures is because they didn't think it was going to fill up. And obviously we've had a couple of good years of rain and snow and it's full and it's, um, at capacity. But one of the things we'd like to, to talk about is it's a unique name and it's been a unique process in, um, coming up with the high school with the lease revenue bond. And so we feel like we want to have a unique mascot. So you can look up there and kind of get an idea of what we are presenting to the board tonight, which would be a lightning bolt. But we want to shorten it. We don't want to be the Deer Creek Lightning. Uh, we want to be the Deer Creek Bolts. It's short and one of the things we, we went to a competition with drill and cheer. And if it's more than four or five letters, it's going to get misspelled. And it's not very like invigorating to cheer a long name. You gotta, you gotta make it short. And so Stacy, if you go with the next slide, these are some renderings of me personally. I want a Z at the end because we're the bolts. It's something unique. Um, but this is a quick rendering that BSN did for us. We want to keep the colors of navy blue, actually Sean, it's lake blue, silver, mine gray and glacier white. And you know, blue looks good on people. It's slimming. Um, go to the next one. These are just some, some renderings that they came up with. I'd like to see maybe mountain Pinogus behind with a Z. But you talk about something that kids can get behind. Every kid I showed this to was like, that's cool. That's a cool thing to do. Like we could be the bolts. We could, we could be something different. Uh, bolt swimming, bolts baseball, bolts football, bolts wrestling. It, it just kind of rolls off your tongue. And we can get behind it. Go to the next one, Stacy. Um, again, these are something that BSN put together for us to kind of talk about it. You know, we could play some AC/DC, some high voltage. Um, I'm a rocker at heart, so we're, we're going to have some rock and roll maybe and we can get loud with, 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 with this new name. But that's the name that we would like as a committee for the board to consider. Um, it's unique. It goes along with the power source of Deer Creek. And anybody who has ever lived in Deer Creek or in Wasatch County, or if you're from Utah County and you happen to come up to our lake, um, a storm coming across Deer Creek across Tempe, Pinogus is pretty wicked. And so I think having a lightning, you know, that if you can kind of sit through it and wait, the water gets smooth tighter and we like to surf. So, um, next one, these are just, again, some renderings that we had, uh, them do. This is one of my favorites because it reminds me back in my big hair days when I had hair. A little AC/DC. So Deer Creek Bolts. That's our proposal.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
It was just an average one until I put it on.
And glacier white, it's sharp.
What shoes you tying in here with this too? What do you got? What is the look here?
Yeah, those are, those are like.
Okay, all right.
Okay, all right. Nice, nice. Put together well.
Just threw it together.
It was just in the closet.
Well, thank you. That was terrific. Appreciate it. I will take that under consideration. I don't even know, do we have to make a decision? Is, we really don't. It's, this is what it is.
It's just information today.
Information well taken. So appreciate it. We're getting closer.
Any questions?
Questions from the board?
Thanks for coming back.
No, that was a great presentation. Yeah.
We've, we've put you through a lot, Justin. Appreciate it. So thanks so much.
I do like the Z. I'll just say that.
And the renderings are great. They've done a great job and looks classy.
I had to kind of twist their arm. We had to twist their arm to kind of get the bolts through. Sean probably going to talk about BSN a little bit, but I think having the Z on there just kind of sets it apart.
With that, let's move on. Appreciate it, Justin. Um, anything else? Do we? We've got listed here, uh, another public comment. Do we, do we need to do that? I don't think so. Or unless we do, any, any public comment at this point? No? Okay. With that, move to consent items?
Second.
Second? Okay. Consent items passes?
You better vote on it, Brittany.
Yeah, let's go. Sorry. Yeah. Is there a vote? Let's get a vote on that.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Okay. Anything else? Move into action items? Should we go from there?
So for action item number one, to the consideration to approve and amend the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four budget. I'd like to make the motion to open and amend the revenue and expenditure budget for fiscal year twenty-four to receive and expand an additional billion dollars in the general fund, an additional five hundred thousand in the student activity fund, and an additional four, forty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-four in the tax increment financing fund, and an additional three hundred thousand in the foundation enterprise fund, authorizing the receipt of additional funds in the amount, in the amounts mentioned from state, federal and local sources and to reconcile and expand the amounts to meet the requirements of state school law.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Twenty-twenty-three, think twenty-four. Thank you very much. Um, next.
All right. I'll make the motion to approve and adopt the general student activity tax increment financing debt service, capital, local building authority, food services and enterprise revenue and expenditure budgets for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five as presented. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Twenty-twenty-five, here it comes. Number three.
Okay, I am here to have you approve the licensed employee negotiations agreement as we all sat through. But I want to give you just a little bit of background in my public comment now. Seven years ago, I started this job and the starting salary was thirty-six thousand dollars. And today it's going to be near sixty-six with this approval and so doubled in seven years. And between that and our hundred percent funding of insurance, I am telling you when I meet with teachers, this is the season where we meet with teachers and I meet with every one of them personally and put them on the salary schedule and go through the benefit package with them. And it blows them away. They leave there so happy and, and just, they can't imagine that they're getting full benefits at zero cost from, from them in their pocket and also getting the pay that they get. And all the other things that we talk about. It's nice to go to hiring fairs and be the coolest kid on the playground. When we walk in and they see, oh, there's Wasatch and I get a, you know, put my little slideshow up and have all this stuff. And it's like, hey, guess what? You can come to us and get paid this, or you can go to this district and not. And they come. And it's, it's a blessing for us to have that. So with that said, I appreciate what you guys have accomplished. I think it's a admirable thing that you have accomplished to give our teachers what, what you have. So you can see the six items that we discussed and the teachers ratified this. So tonight, my proposal for you is to accept the licensed employee negotiation agreement as written.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hey, the comments there, anything there? Okay.
We had a great meeting.
Yeah.
It was really positive. Um, yeah. I've heard a lot already just from teachers. Like Jenna was saying, I've heard a lot from teachers about maternity leave, even the ones who you wouldn't think to hear from. It's, it's going to make a big difference in a lot of lives. So.
I think it's neat to hear the, the older vet, uh, come back and say, hey, that's a great, a great move. So.
And I think we've accomplished a couple of things. You have new teachers that are happy with some of the things in this agreement, the maternity leave, the, the salary increase. And then you have veteran teachers who retire now at forty dollars on their sick days. That makes a substantial difference. It was like fifteen dollars a few years ago and people are like, why should I wait? I'll just use my sick days and take a two-month, uh, surgery. Now it's between forty-five and fifty-two hundred dollars in a little nice bonus when they retire for their sick days. So I think you've accomplished both ends of the spectrum in doing some of those things that's written in this agreement.
Well, I just want to say, I mean, we, we said this in our meeting already, but I'll say it again. We support our teachers. We have your backs and you do amazing things for our students and we want to make sure you're taken care of.
But appreciate your direction and all this. It's been great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, with that, did we, did we pass that all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, the next one was the educational support professional agreement. And my anecdote to this is as we did the study, the job study that was requested by our, uh, educational support people, I want to tell you that that came back, that we are indeed paying the best of districts around and we're competitive with industry. And the job study has given us a good reference for our wages for this group of people. And we can refer to that. And we can refer to that and say we are in line with the rest of the industry and we're actually winning in all of the other surrounding districts. Park City is a few places that are higher than us, but overall, we're very competitive in our educational support people, and it's showing in our applications. We hired a couple of custodians and maintenance people, and we've had more applicants than we've had in the near future. In the, in the, in the little while, in the last three or four years, this round, we had more applicants. And again, it's the wage, it's the benefits. So tonight, I'm, uh, asking your approval to approve the educational support professional agreement as written.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
While we're on that, I forgot to tell you, uh, we did, as you know, add the fourteenth paid holiday. And that was a huge boost to morale for those people as well. They were really appreciative of that day after Thanksgiving. So now, as you know, there's fourteen paid holidays, so.
Thank you.
Way to go.
Give me a comment.
Yeah, again, just, um, with our teachers, without support professionals, without custodians, without bus drivers, without the lunch staff, all of the above, we, we can't function. So they're very important to us, and we want to make sure we take care of them as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, my next one is our supervisor employee negotiations, and I've had the question, who are these folks? These would be our maintenance supervisor, our lunch supervisor, our custodian supervisor, fall under this category. And they are separate because sometimes they have different negotiated items because of their supervisory role. Uh, these guys are leaders in our district. They do a lot of things behind the scenes and, and leading the, the staff that they're over. So, tonight I would like to have you approve the supervisor employee negotiation agreement as written.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And finally, tonight, our administrative group of employees, uh, they have a similar package as our licensed professionals. And these are our leaders of every school, the pool, the bus garage. And those two positions that we added a few years ago have been great additions of having this, uh, admin at the pool and at the bus garage. Having that leadership there has made a significant change in the climate of those areas, and they're doing a wonderful job. As you know, and the superintendent has said this, he said it today to our admin, the number one factor in a school is the principal. And the leadership that they show, the work, they, they work, work, work. And a lot of times, it's a thankless job except from us because parents like the teachers and the administrators maybe get left out from time to time. But our administrator group is second to none, and we have the best administrators around. And I want to thank them for all the work and effort that they do, leading those schools. So tonight, I'm asking for you to approve the administrative employee negotiations agreement as written.
Take a motion.
So moved.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
So number seven, I'll take the lead here. Um, this is to approve our contracts of our, our chief guys, our administrators for Paul and for Jason. And, uh, I, I first just want to say, I'm very proud to be able to do this for these two guys. Just so, so grateful for them and for what they, they do, what they do for administrator. I remember back when, uh, with Mark Davis, uh, Mark saying, we have a very talented superintendent, and I, and I, I totally agree with that. And, and further, as we've learned here with Jason, we have two very talented individuals that run and lead this, this district. And their, their salaries, their contracts are very in line and very appropriate. And, uh, I wish to present that, uh, tonight, their salaries to approve their contracts.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any comments there?
I, I'm with Tyler. I agree. I thoroughly enjoyed working with superintendent and, and our business administrator, they're both very capable, more than capable, forward-thinking. They lead this district in the proper way and, and they're, um, they care. Bottom line is, they care.
I think it shows, reflects in, in everything that we do and our, even to our numbers. And, uh, of our elementary schools, all the way, all the way up and down the line, and it, it, it comes back to these leaders that we have, and appreciate them. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, um, number eight, Todd.
I'm here requesting approval for additional instructional materials that we feel will add to our teacher's tool belt as we chase the goal to learn from the best until we become the best on all, um, state and, uh, well, state end of level tests. Um, the materials that I'd like to present to you tonight, um, the first two have to do with, um, improved literacy. We're the best in the state, and we plan to continue growing in this area. Uh, ACT research tells us that the number one thing we can do for our students is teach them to read and comprehend complex text. There's nothing better that we could do that would, um, help them improve their college and work competencies as measured by the ACT. And so I'm actually really excited about this first request. Um, the teachers have piloted, um, an additional science resource called Newzella. We've seen that in the high school and at Rocky Mountain Middle School, and now there is wide red, widespread requests for that to go to all of our secondary students across the district. And so I'm requesting the approval for, uh, Newzella Science, Integrated Literacy and Science for Secondary Students for nineteen thousand, three hundred and ten dollars and forty-four cents.
Take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Comments?
I'll just say, I appreciate this because critical thinking skills, I mean, we're, we're moving so far up and things that teachers are using that other teachers want to use because they know it's working is huge, so I appreciate this.
Thank you.
The second request is primarily for our elementary students, but also moves into our middle-level students. Um, this is technology called BrainPop, which is, um, also a literacy supplemental curriculum. Um, students use that to improve their reading and comprehension skills. So my request is for the approval of BrainPop for twenty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty-five cents.
Motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you. I have three more. Um, the, the next one is, is for math, and, um, I can attest that we've used Alex for a number of years at Wasatch High School, and the request is to continue using that. Um, primarily, our ninth grade collaborative math team is very interested in using Alex to diagnose and assess, um, s- uh, the students' learning of the core secondary Math One curriculum. It'll also be used in other areas at Wasatch High School. Uh, Alex is very reputable, and, um, uh, my request is that you approve, um, Alex, um, which is Mc- our McGraw-Hill product for nineteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Are you seconding it?
No, is there one?
Oh, second. I thought you were seconding it.
I can.
I know, that's why. It's like, alright, vote away.
Okay, all in favor?
I love Alex Math. I think it's a great program. Not, I think it's easy to use. It's, you, you actually learn something. It has like different levels.
Yeah.
I don't know. I just, I've gone through it with my kids.
Cool.
It's a good program.
It customizes, it adapts.
Yeah, adapts.
It's easy for the layperson?
It is. I like it.
Okay, thanks, Todd.
Okay, two more.
Okay.
So, uh, the next two, the, the, these are technology resources, and they come through Explore Learning. And the first is Gizmos, and the second is Reflex, um, both under the same hat. Gizmos is science and Reflex is math, but, uh, they're interactive technology resources that give students simulations in those subject areas to help them, uh, learn the curriculum. And so my request for this one is to approve Explore Learning Renewal, which is Gizmos and Reflex Math and Science for thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-five cents.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And finally, um, this is a product we've, uh, used for a number of years. I remember, uh, the first trips to Albuquerque in a bumpy plane ride, where we explored E twenty-twenty, and now the product is called Edgenuity. And we use that at the high school for our online curriculum. Um, a number of students are using that, and I, I, I really like that the students have this opportunity because, um, not only does it adapt to, um, students' learning style, most students get an opportunity to ta- to take at least one online class while they're at high school in our district. And I think that that's valuable as they learn to learn that way because it prepares them for their college experience. But the other thing that I really love about that is it allows students to, um, substitute some courses that they may want to take online so that they can expand their onsite, um, options while they're, um, are at Wasatch High School during the regular school day. And so, um, Edgenuity, uh, we get a reduced price when it licenses through, um, the news region. And so, uh, this pays our portion of the bill back to news. And so I'm requesting for Edgenuity, thirty-five thousand, one hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Todd. Well, it is, you know, just to comment, e- even when the kids are in secondary, uh, their college courses, it's, there's still online stuff they're taking. It's not just a symptom of, of COVID now, you know, even if they're on, i- in, in place class takers, they're still, I remember Jack had to do two or three online courses. So they're still, there's just still, that have to do it, so.
Yeah.
We have Edgenuity in our home, so very familiar with it.
So, thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So last one, Steph.
Hello, I'm here to request, um, approval of this series twenty-four, twenty-five TSSP plans. We did the Trustlands plans, um, a month or so ago, and now it's the time of year to do the TSSP plans. And it's another, you know, legislative funds source that we have. You have the elementary plans that you've had a chance to look at. Again, it's done very similar to what I explained earlier with Trustlands or the land trust money, um, through a committee and approval, chasing goals to the kid level. And, um, I'm just wondering if you had any questions about those, and if not, I request approval for each of the elementaries.
Questions? Is there a motion?
I.
Whatever, a motion?
That twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, T double S P?
T double S P, that works.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Any comments there for? Thanks, Steph.
Um, before I leave, could I just take my open?
Please do.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, um, a huge thank you with my new position and getting to travel around to all the elementary schools and work with all the principals and teachers and the staff. Um, so often you'll see in a classroom, the kids will take on the personality of a teacher, or schools take on the personality of a principal. I just want to say that a huge thank you that this district has taken on the personality of this school board and our superintendent. You go out and you walk through these halls and into these classrooms, and you have visionaries, you have leaders, you have, um, caretakers. Um, and I think the thing that I am just so impressed by and so humbled by is you guys are servant, just amazing models of servant leadership. You're all about doing whatever you can to help others, and it stretches far and wide across this district. And our teachers see that, are, um, and what's really neat is it's getting to the kid level. Like, you hear these things in the hallways and the playgrounds with our kids, and like you said, it's taken some time and, but here we are. And I just want to say, I love my job, and I love getting out to see all the amazing things that are out there. And so much of it has to do with the, the precedent that you set of high expectations and helping others, so, thank you. It's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, uh, through those action items. Um, I think we'll move into, do we have any board report at this point?
I have one thing. If you'll notice, the new emergence art contest, um, artwork is on, on the walls now. So, take note of that and go look at each one of those.
How many years have we been doing that now? What's, what is this?
I think three or four now.
Four? It's awesome.
Three?
That's cool.
Fourth year?
Thank you. Anything else?
Um, I'll just report back. USBA had their pre-delegate and delegate assembly went well. Those priorities are emailed out to, should be emailed out to everyone. Those are our legislative priorities moving forward. Going through the interim session and into the next legislative session. Lot going on.
Do we know at any point, wh- where are we, state school board? Who's, who's there? Um, who's our, who's our Jim Moss? Is he Jim there? What are we looking?
No, uh, Jim did not pass out a convention, um, so the Republican candidate is Cole Kelly, and I do not know if there is another candidate.
Okay. No relation? No relation?
We'll clarify that.
In our district.
Hey, that's my maiden name. No relation.
So, I, uh, President Bluth, um, I'd like to just share some information. As we've, uh, made our way through, you know, a, a pretty important board meeting tonight, approving our budget and, and approving our contracts with our employees and, and, uh, as I, uh, and Garrick, I'm gonna have you come up in just a moment, just prepare. I, I'm gonna have you come up in a mo- in a moment and just give a brief update to the board, um, as it relates to our achievement as compared to last year. Um, we won't make any assumptions as to where we rank, um, just yet, but I, I'm, I am gonna have Garrick come, come forward and, uh, give you an update. I don't know, Stace, if we could, if we could find that slide that we had in our meeting this morning. Uh, if that's possible to chase down while I, while I talk for a moment, if it's not, that's fine. But as, as we listen to, to Mr. Johnson approve all these, uh, all of these curriculums, I wanna, I wanna make sure that, that everybody understands the philosophy educationally of, of this district. And, uh, I want it, you know, stated on the public record. Um, as we have, as we have gone from a district that was middle of the pack to, to the top of the state and near or at the top of the state in, in, in the three categories that are tested at the state level. What we know through experience is we know, and, and I think a lot of people miss this one, a- at least to begin with. Uh, I think there's a, a misnomer that there's a curriculum out there that is some sort of a silver bullet, that there's a curriculum that will, once we put it in front of our students, our students will soar to the top of the achievement charts. And I'm here to, to, to make it clear that it's our philosophy, and it's, it's through the work that we've done, through the, the years of experience we have in this district. There is, there is no such curriculum. Um, we believe that high achievement comes through the work of a skilled, well-trained, caring, professional teacher. That's where high achievement comes from. Now, it's our job, as we sat at the bench tonight and approved these curriculums, it's our job to seek out. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have you just for a moment as you- As you picture a teacher standing, and you've probably heard me talk like this before. But as you picture a teacher standing at the front of the classroom, that teacher has a tool belt around their waist. And it's our job as policymakers and administrators to make sure that those teachers. Have a tool belt full of great tools. And we leave it up to the teacher as to when to pull which tool. And as we buy tools to put in their tool belt, we also are a district that believes in professional development. And we make sure that our teachers have the proper um, training and education. That goes along with these, with these curriculums. And um, in turn, you know, you can, you can, you can include a textbook. There's no textbook out there that does magic with students. The magic comes from the wise teacher in the classroom. Now, just to give a little more context to Mr. Kelly's comment. What he stated is that the principal is the number one factor in a building. And, and I, I think he just trailed off a little early. What, what he should have added to that is the principal is the number one influence. On student achievement at a school. They don't do the actual work. The teacher does. The wise teacher and the most important part of the cog. Um, we will always, we will always hold up as the teacher. But every bit of research out there um, would say that the number one catalyst. Catalyst being someone that moves the needle, someone that leads the charge is the principal. And we have all gone to districts, even here in this state, where we went to hear about. An education program or a curriculum. And when we got to the school to learn about it, there were people from the district there. Um, giving us the training and telling us all about how it worked in this school. And by the, when we left, we wasn't even sure who the principal was. That is not in line with Wasatch's philosophy. Our philosophy is the principal has to be the leader and, and lead the faculty. In this education pursuit. And it's our job as district people to be merely in support roles. Um, we set the vision, um, today in, in our admin meeting. Garrick walked us through the board's, the board's mission, vision, um, values, goals. We walked through that entire document today as a, as a reminder. And really what I'm saying here overall is, um. The precious commodity that we are entrusted with would be the. The seventy-five hundred students that live in this, in this community, that live within the boundaries of Wasatch County. And the people that we trust this precious commodity with are number one, our teachers. And number two, our principals, we expect them to be courageous leaders. And to lead out with our goals. Duplicate those goals at the school level and to make sure, as I loved how Stephanie put that, that the school takes on. The persona of the principal, just as a football team takes on the persona of its head coach. And I think to sum it all up, what I'm, what I'm wanting to state on the record is in this district. Curriculum is important. Um, state standards are very important. We follow them. We want our students to do well on what we've all decided is the most important thing. Textbooks are important. Computers and, and iPads are important. But the most important thing, the thing we value most are our people. The people that work in this district. That's what makes our district awesome. That's what has come, that, that's what has propelled us from middle of the pack to top of the state. And achievement is the hard work of all of these people combined. We have a great system going. We have, have, w- w- we pinch ourselves all the time. Um, as we see what's going on in some of the surrounding areas. That we have a, a school board that understands this, that understands what we're up against. That understands that the reason we're paying our teachers is the best we can is because if we don't, they can't live here. We can't hire any teachers if we don't. We're not doing this just to um, make sure that. We're, we're, we're not doing this for any other reason than we have to. Um, for teachers to move here, to, to stay here. One of the biggest goals we have as a, as a policymaking board is to attract and retain the best teachers we possibly can. And without a fair compensation package that has some sort of, some sort of. Continuity with the local economy and the local cost of a home. Um, really puts us in a, in a bad spot. So, so we're, we're really feel like we're functioning on, on all cylinders right now. From, from our board to our, our administration, to some of the best principals. And I'm including assistants in that, um, that you'll find anywhere. And, and then to, we would, we would put our group of teachers up. We have about five hundred teachers in this district and they're as good as anywhere you'll find anywhere in the country. And they are the ones that are making that magic happen in the classroom. And uh, it's the people that are responsible for high achievement. Uh, everything else is just a tool and just a support to make that happen. And uh, it's working and we're so pleased with our results. And uh, at this time, let's have um, our assistant superintendent Garrick, Dr. Garrick Peterson. Give us a little update on how things look at the end of this year. Thank you.
All right. Paul really put me, put uh, me on the spot and by so doing, put Stacy on the spot because I lose things. That, that, that data's on my computer. I don't know where it is. But luckily she took a, a, a picture of it earlier. Actually, I do know where it is. It's at my house, so. Um, uh, gonna talk a little bit about, um, Paul said, you know, you think about the capacity of our teachers. But I do think one of the things that has us um, maybe leading the nation right now. In the work that we're doing is, um, there's a concept in PLC work called systemness and it's based off two concepts. Um, and, and so from a district standpoint, we really have a pretty easy job right now. We, we just head through our mission, vision, commitments and goals and we just hit it over and over and over again and just operate. And we executed it at a different level each year.
Nice stuff. You, you just said nation, not state.
Yeah, yeah. The, the, the data that's coming in right now is really awesome. Um, so um, with that, um, uh, you, you look and, and. And then this, our second job is to just support teams like crazy. When they're trying to keep the commitments and achieve the mission and the vision of the district and we just support, support, support. We talk to and we just support people executing that. And, and one of the things with systemness is you're, you're trying to get every team to function as highly as they possibly can. Um, and in this case, I'll say to achieve one of our goals, which is to learn from the best teachers and districts in the state. And teams until we become that. And the reason we wanna become that is the second part of systemness. Which is to me, the beautiful part of our culture right now and what has us in the position that we are in. Is that once you learn something, you're not doing it for accolades. You're doing it to benefit others. And it's your job to share. You have an obligation to share at that point. And as our teachers continue to work with each other and kind of like the, uh, the, the Jim Collins flywheel thing. Um, uh, now that we have teachers and teams excelling. You can't believe the culture that exists in our district of teachers sharing their practices with other teachers, which is the best way we learn. Uh, we don't need somebody to come in and professionally develop us. We don't need to go. It's our teachers sharing with other teachers that is the flywheel that's spinning in our district right now and it's pretty awesome. Because if, our, our teachers are experimenting all the time and they're forward thinking and they're visionaries and they're. And, and, and when they hit on something, I always say, man, if, if we try stuff and, and we hit like. Twenty-five percent of the stuff we do works better, that's pretty dang good. I mean, 'cause now that gets to spread and then we keep problem solving where we need to, where we know we need to improve and we just, we analyze the data. Um, we have a phenomenal team, one of the best teams that a- allow us to do that, to kind of be on point where we need to keep working. And it's just awesome to be part of the district and watch that system this work where everyone is trying as. I, every team in this district is trying as hard as they possibly can. I do believe that. And I do believe when people are learning something, now they are so open to share with others and that's a phenomenal culture to be a part of. So with that, um, uh, when, when you start reaching the top, um, and Paul said this, this earlier. And he used the analogy of basketball, you know, if a kid can only make one out of ten free throws, getting them up to five, six, seven is pretty easy. You just teach him some things and you get him up to five, six, seven. But when you, when you hit seven, getting eight can be really hard. Getting to nine can be really hard and ten out of ten, like. So the better we get, the harder it is con- to continue to move that achievement needle. Um, and we're kind of getting into that zone right now where we're hitting the top of the state in some things. And yet we're still trying to push and become better uh, bit by bit. And that, 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 that comes down to details of work rather than just doing the work. Um, it's how, how well you can execute the details of things. So with that, one of the exciting things is even though we're into those details and we know we were uh, first in the state last year and you can just look up here right now. Now, one of the things, we're, we're doing this, we're showing this data. We need to know that it's preliminary data. Um, I don't even know if we're supposed to show it, but Brett Zabel left town. There's no, there's nobody watching me right now, so we got it up here. But this is preliminary data. There's a verify, verification process that goes through. Um, we usually get the verified data more around October, September of the next year after they do all of that. But this is gonna be really close about where we are. I don't think we'll see any large swings in this. So our language arts scores, even though we were number one in the state last year, we were able to kick that up a percent. Um, uh, which is awesome. That means we keep moving up. That's like moving from, you know, making eight free throws to nine. Very difficult work. Um, there were some excellent changes that took place in our district to help us reach that. Um, uh, there were some teams that really soared. Um, and when they, when they soar, now we just gotta connect the system and have them share some things they did. Really the phenomenal thing, like honestly, this kind of data district-wide just never happens, ever. Like, never. But in math, to go up seven point two percent is where our projections are right now. Is absolutely crazy. Um, and um, just changes and details. And again, our vision is that the key to improve student learning is increase capacity in adults. So all of our efforts go to increasing the capacity of adults in our system. And this shows some incredible learning from our adults this year. Like what they learned, I don't know. I'll be really honest with you. But we'll, now we'll get to learn 'cause we'll get to connect that system. I have some ideas. But when we connect that, we're gonna start hearing those ideas come out about the details of their work this past year and it will be awesome. And then science, we saw a really good jump in science again. Two point four percent, that is a significant jump. It doesn't seem significant 'cause we're talking, comparing it to seven point two. But two point four again is a significant jump district-wide. Um, you know, with, you know, seven, depending on if you include our, our online population, somewhere between seven and nine thousand students. That's a lot of kids, a lot of kids. I think Paul said earlier, um, we probably have to take an adjustment. That our twelfth and eleventh graders and K one-two are not part of this data. But you know, we're probably uh, dealing with a good five hundred additional kids. Five hundred additional kids are probably on level in math this year. Cause of the ability of our teachers and think of the doors and the opportunities that will open for those kids. Um, our mission is to get all kids to achieve, to learn all, all the knowledge, skills and dispositions. And for what purpose? So that they can achieve their goals. And for five hundred kids, their vision of the goals that they can achieve just broadened a whole lot this year. Uh, thanks to the work of our teachers and principals like Paul said. So that's kind of the update on where we feel that our data's gonna come in. Uh, this coming year, just phenomenal work continues to go forth uh, out in our schools.
That's great. Garrick, thank you so much.
Thanks, Eric.
Appreciate it.
I have a quick comment. So a few things to come to, come to my mind. First of all, Tyler did an awesome job. I was looking for a more of a rowdy crew here, so when you get into a budget hearing like this. Um, I was hoping that there would have been more pitchforks and torches. To give you, to give you the experience that you need as the president. You're doing an awesome.
Did you have that last go around?
I've had a few. I was, I was hoping for someone to say that the admin or the administrative uh, negotiations was a bunch of fluff. I don't know if you remember that, but there was a lady that said that and I had to make sure that she knew that, no, absolutely not. Our leaders are well-deserving of the, the salaries and the, the contracts that they have. So the whole, the whole group of employees tonight to be able to vote on the contracts is a great night. We're glad that we were able to do it. We took a little longer than we've done in previous years. But we wanted to make sure that we, we did it right and that we feel that it justifies all of the things that Paul said so greatly. Um, I had an opportunity to work in Chicago last week and Sarah came out and we went on a little road trip. And she wanted to see Michael Jackson's childhood home. So I'm just along for the ride and we, we go through Gary, Indiana. I don't know if anybody's ever been to Gary, Indiana and.
Is it like New Orleans as far as?
It's the murder capital of Indiana State.
So there's, there's that. I'd never been, I'd never heard, I didn't even know where I was going. And as we turned down to Jackson Street, which is where the house is. And the house is probably a quarter of this room. It looked like it was a one-room house, very small house. We passed an abandoned elementary school. And I looked and I'm like, that's, like, you don't see that. And then the next block on the strange street, there is an abandoned high school. And there's a football field that's graffitied and grown over and it looked like those apocalypse, end of the world movies. You'd think zombies were gonna show up. Um, anyway, we saw the house and we moved on and then I drove by another school. And I'm like, what in the hell is going on in Gary, Indiana? And they've closed twenty-one schools and they've abandoned them, just walked away from them. And if you look online, they look books and chairs and blackboards and computers. It's, and then the gangs have shown up and people are getting killed in these schools. And it was just, it was an eye-opening experience for me to see that there's a place like that. In the United States of America. And because it is the myrtle, murder capital of the world, there is no education. Being to some degree, everybody's left and the population's declined. It used to be the largest city in Indiana. And now it's very, very, I mean, it's, the population has dropped a ton. And one of the reasons is 'cause there was a big steel mill and the steel factory closed and so. But so goes the, the schools, so goes the education, so goes the community. As it compares to Gary, Indiana, like no one locks their doors around here. There is some crime, but it's not even a thing. You, there's no looting in the Walmarts or in the Home Depots or in the gas stations. This is a very great place to live. People come from all over the world to live here and they'll continue to come over to li- live here. Because of the education. Um, another thing, because of our scores, I just wanna make sure that the school board remembers. And I had a conversation from somebody in California and I was talking to their son who graduated in twenty twenty. And he didn't go to school that whole year. And then he has another brother that was a junior and they didn't go to school that whole year. And then for the third year, that they didn't go back to school. And so where schools were closed, this board kept the schools open. And we've seen the studies that have come out of the Ivy League colleges to show. That because of that, our, we have a head start. And I firmly believe that we're ahead of the pack because we were able to keep the teachers in the classrooms. And the final thing I would like to say, especially to, and this is directed to the individuals in the room that are current principals. And potentially future principals. There is a risk of having a distraction to your teachers with new schools being opened. And one of the reasons why our schools are so great, because our teachers, they don't have to worry about Maslow's triangle. More now than ever, like their basic needs are taken care of and the comments. And the comments tonight, they they're making salaries that other professionals make, and that's great. They don't have to worry about that, so what do they worry about? The students. They don't have to complain about that because they're getting paid a fair wage compared to other districts, so they're not looking to to move schools. So that that's the last thing that I just want to to close with is keep this, the, keep your your resources, which are your your teachers focused. Don't let them get distracted. And there's a ton of distraction that can happen when they're trying to figure out where they're going to teach, what their your their livelihood is going to look like in new schools, and we've never experienced it before. And so I hope we keep that in mind as we move into next year, and we have additional help with the assistant principals, and we start to divvy out the roles and responsibilities of those new leaders in those new schools. It has the potential to be a huge distraction to the teachers. And that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Appreciate the leadership here. We've got all the way up and down. It's fun and amazing to see. Anything else from the board, Paul? Okay, with that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much. We'll see you next month.